All right, I'll call to order. It's six o'clock and I'll call to order the Wauwawashe City Council, City Council Meeting on October 4th and we'll be going.
United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, where we need us to strong.
Yep, nice group of members from the public. We do have, we do have a presentation before public comment, but after the presentation, Jonathan's presentation will have time for public comments. So we have Jonathan Nelson from Bolton Lake, our landscape architect, who's going to present on the Wauwawashe Downtown Plan and give some context to this. I think it was a handout. Was that yours, Jonathan?
It was not.
You got connected?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for, thanks for having me here to talk about the Downtown Streetscape Plan. The brief introduction with Jonathan Nelson, landscape architect from Bolton Lake. Been working in the Wauwawashe community since about 2016. So been working there for a while on projects such as the public parking location project, Parks and Trails master plan, National Eagle Center, and now the Downtown Streetscape Plan. So just wanted to start with some background on the project. So the Downtown Streetscape Plan is a separate part of the project for the 2023 Street Utility Reconstruction Plan. And it was really kind of born out of that, out of that reconstruction plan. The city recognized a need to kind of have a document that kind of guided the future for the Streetscape Development. This private 2023 project was going to have such an impact on, on the downtown and its aesthetics. So the Streetscape Plan really includes two sets of elements that include elements that are all funded, identified as funded elements. Those are elements that will be included with the 2023 reconstruction project and then elements that are currently not funded. Those will be elements targeted for future opportunities as, as grants or other funding avenues present themselves. So a little background, the Downtown Streetscape Plan really looked at kind of six key elements. And those included streetscaping improvements, looking at general aesthetics of the Streetscape area. So that would include things like site furnishings, lighting, landscaping, pavement treatments, things of that nature. We looked at wave binding and community entry signage, looking at, and what would be called a special opportunity area. That's the area shown in red up there, kind of Heritage Park and the existing parking lot of Highway 60 and that area along Lawrence Boulevard, along the riverfront. Also looked at opportunities to integrate a public restroom facility into the downtown. Connections between the downtown and the river, as well as along the downtown riverfront, and then looked at connections between downtown and Beach Park. So as noted, the Downtown Streetscape Plan really similar to, in line with the 2023 Street Utility Reconstruction Project. The two projects have similar timelines and the goal with this is that the Downtown Streetscape Plan would be ready for, when that 2023 Streetscape, or Street Utility Project is ready for construction, to help to guide those improvements implemented this part of that project. Some highlights from the process, really the Downtown Streetscape Plan process ran from May to October of this year. During that time, we held three series committee meetings and with that group kind of identified what those treatments would be and some of those those different treatments for various projects. During that time, we also held several opportunities for project engagement, the first being the outline visual preference survey. The second being the September Fest company that we, we had a pop of that there presented some of the materials. So that outcome comes from the project. So ultimately, the outcome of the project is the Downtown Streetscape Plan document. And this document is intended to kind of memorialize the process that was carried through to develop the plan, identify the recommendations, develop through the planning process, tools for that process and information and graphics to help aid the city in those future implementation projects. This document is also going to be useful for seeking project funding in the future. So anytime you're going to pursue outside funding sources, they like to see, you know, the city has invested its time and efforts and staff efforts into these, into these plans versus just adding something that they come up with off the top and pursue funding. So go help with that as well. So I was just going to run through some of those items, elements that were identified for inclusion in 2023 Street Reconstruction Project or what we found funding project elements. Starting with some of those downtown aesthetic items. So this shows kind of a typical block treatment in the downtown core and some of the proposed improvements for that area. So that includes things like hardscaping, so looking at plain concrete as well as colored concrete accents. Decorative LED lighting that would be a similar temperament to the existing historic lighting. Site furnishings such as benches, bike racks, litter receptacles, as well as wave binding signage and informational kiosks. And then lastly, landscape treatments, trees and tree rates and final ones. So as, as mentioned, we looked at wave binding signage as well, including whole mounted wave binding signage as well as informational kiosks. As part of that process, we identified seven locations for implementation of whole mounted wave binding signs. Two locations for public parking lot signage and one location for an informational kiosk that's adjacent to Heritage Park. So looking at the streetscaping and how it ties in with future implementation, we kind of developed part of this three tiers of Streetscape levels. Tier one, shown in the yellow on this picture, is kind of that, that downtown core, the areas of the heaviest pedestrian concentration and commercial business activity. So these are going to be the areas targeted with the highest levels of treatments, kind of what was shown on that typical block plan in two slides of that. Tier two, shown in the purple, is kind of your primary and particular access grounds into the community. So these are going to be areas that are targeted with decorative lighting treatments that kind of reflect that downtown character and kind of lead people into the community. And then the tier three areas shown in red, those are primarily residential districts and those would be areas where we're recommending in the future as streets are reconstructed, looking at sidewalk connectivity through those areas. The next piece is the Walnut Avenue Promenade. So this is looking at an opportunity to strengthen that connection between Main Street, the downtown, and the riverfront. Currently, there is not an accessible route between Main Street and the river on Walnut. Current sidewalk is on the west side and there's currently light poles situated right at the goal of sidewalks. So it really feeds opportunities for connectivity there for pedestrians. So as part of this plan, we'd be looking at removing the sidewalk on the west side, turn to that and the landscaping and grass and really developing the east side of the block into more of that, we'll call it the promenade. And so that area would be receiving treatments similar to Main Street as far as decorative pavement, lighting, and really just aiming to make that a visual and physical connection to the river of our Walnut. The last piece of the funded elements is the public restroom. So during this committee process, we explored four different locations for possible public restroom in downtown. These included spots north of the library, Popcorn Park, south of Heritage Park, and then lastly, the area near the Highway 60 bridge and Lawrence Boulevard. And that was ultimately a kind of a preferred area that was identified for a restroom facility. We also looked at three different levels of treatments for that facility, ranging from a portable toilet screen closure up to a full four-season heated restroom facility. And the consensus was to aim for a three-season facility that would be insulated for longer use or potentially a four-season facility depending on cost. So looking then at the opportunity-driven projects, what we're calling them, are the elements that are funded currently. Monument signage was one of those elements. So as part of this process, we looked at some concept development for monument signage as part of the visual quality survey that was conducted online. A lot of the feedback we got folks really resonated with the idea of using local materials and really reflecting kind of the natural environment of the Wauwawashe area. So some of those rock outcroppings in the bluff area. So the signs really reflect kind of that limestone outcropping look. We also got feedback about wanting it to be timeless, have kind of a modern feel, but also be kind of have that historic feel as well. So looking at some pin-on metal lettering on that, as well as opportunities for backlighting or uplighting on the signs. Ultimately, these, the, the design of the signs as well as locations and scale, things of that nature would be refined at the time that funding is secured for the sign. Additionally, consideration could be given to the locations of the sign, whether they replace, whether they replace the existing signs in the same location or are relocated to a more of a relocation. The last piece is the Riverfront Plaza. So this is really kind of a long-term vision for the downtown riverfront. The concept explores the realignment of Lawrence Boulevard to maximize the space along the riverfront. What we heard a lot in the visual preference survey, as well as through engagement, was, you know, Wauwawashe is a river town and people wanted to see the riverfront maximized to its greatest potential. So this concept really explores opening up that riverfront. You know, ultimately, this full build-out requires a realignment of Lawrence Boulevard, but it could be completed as well. Keeping Lawrence Boulevard in place is, just requires some shifting of, of elements. The restroom facility has been located such that it could be installed with Lawrence in its current location and could also accommodate a realigned Lawrence Boulevard in the future, should that happen. And again, this is a piece that, that doesn't currently have funding through the city. This is something that would require an outside funding source for implementation. So that's the Riverfront Plaza. And then lastly, the Lawrence Boulevard Trail. Similar to, similar to that Riverfront Plaza, this, this piece does also does not have any funding and would be more of an opportunity project to be explored, you know, at the time that perhaps Lawrence Boulevard requires redevelopment. Looking at some modifications to the current roadway configuration and seeing if there's opportunities to fit a, a separated trail on the river side. So next steps in the Downtown Streetscape Plan process. So tonight, we're asking Council to adopt the Downtown Streetscape Plan document. And then as far as the funded elements, moving forward, this would be incorporated into the construction plans for the 2023 Street Utility Reconstruction Project and ultimately implemented as part of that project. And then with the unfunded elements, those would be kind of analyzed in the future, looking for opportunities to implement those as funding becomes available.
Thank you so much. A lot of people in this group were really involved, so I appreciate that. Any questions, Jonathan, or comments?
You thought I saw coming up a Streetscape IV meeting in October or November?
There is a Parks and Trails Master Plan meeting in October.
Well, I think you've done a lot of work and you're involved with the community a lot. Some of the questions that I have and some other people were, some of the, some of the things that are included in it, from wondering if we really need them. So if we adopt this thing, are we adopting, adopt the resolution, are we adopting this list as it is?
To establish pricing, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think we've got to do and we can still work down from there. I mean, as an example, I think we looked at the price on benches and thought, maybe we can do that better ourselves and we can always do that.
Or plant your pots, for example.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Moist receptacle benches and pot, planters, those are about $110 right there. I wonder if we really need to put those up for big. We have 30 pots out there. Now we have endless benches. They need, some of them need some repair, but.
Yeah, I would say that adopting this document is in time due to these improvements. It's ultimately a intended act as a guide in, in setting some, some standards for the downtown, but those can, you know, modify or tailor to fit within the project.
We don't want to do that. We wanted some alterations or catering of this thing.
Um, that would come, so as far as the Streetscape elements, it's, it would come with the 2023 project, you know, as we get into the design on that. That would be a conversation with, with the city as far as what elements make sense of that.
Yeah, I think when we've talked about the potted plants and things and we recognize there's some debate about it, we just kind of wanted a placeholder to keep moving forward, but all agree that the things could be trimmed down, but the major cost elements are the lighting. I think that's pretty locked in. And then we, we asked, are bump outs required? It is required in certain cases. So we're going to move forward with bump outs where that's required by law. Yeah, these are the big ones.
Yeah. I think we talked at one time that bump outs could be, wouldn't be exactly shown on the, on the typical.
Yeah.
But could, could be modified.
Yeah, bump outs will be modified. Those will be further studied. This was kind of a, just a conceptual layout that was developed just to kind of convey the idea. But those would be, those would be further studied as part of the design process.
I think it was the consensus. I don't think I was just hearing what I wanted to hear, but it was sort of bump outs where they, where they need to be, bump outs designed as they make sense and no bump outs for those, no reason for bump outs. So that seemed to be the, where we left it as our last group meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jonathan. So we do not have action on this until later. Do we have it in first item? Oops, out of my agenda.
Well, it happens later.
It happens later. Good. Okay. So we'll take action later. Thank you so much. Understand if you can't stay with us?
Oh, yeah, I'll stay.
All right, sounds good. It'll be great. It's going to be exciting. All right. So that is our presentation. Now we have time for public comment. All right, there we go. Feel free to join us at the podium if you'd like to make public comment. Just state your name and your address for the record and feel pretty sure your thoughts with council. Try, there's a lot of people here. Try to keep your comments limited to a buck, two minutes and we'll go from there.
I just have a question that one thing I've appreciated Dean doing is posting on Wauwawashe Helping Wauwawashe about what's going on underneath the bridge, about, and look at the plans. If the city could consider doing that with telling people what's going on with all these different things, athletic field movement in it, that's something on Wauwawashe Helping Wauwawashe and also maybe include that same website or another one during the phases of the construction project so that everybody can go to someplace, we know what's going on before it happens, roughly, within a reasonable timeframe. Just to use the website more to keep everybody knowing what's going on, group in the whole city, both City Hall website, X, Y, Z. That's the only item.
I think it's pretty much a reflex at this point that we asked Dean to do that. So we're glad he's willing.
That's my guess, to keep everything more open so people know where things are moving through or what communities are coming up.
Thank you.
All right, we're just in Locust 6, Bridge Avenue. And I wanted to make a quick comment on what's coming up at the Street Utility Project and I sent you this email, Katie and I had it here as well. But I'm hoping, really asking desperately that when the project does start, that they think about starting on the Bridge Avenue side of it because the way my overnight business works and as well as a few other overnight businesses, including lots of Airbnb's and, and Airbnb's is during the months of March, April, May, we're a lot slower. And then during the last part of when the project is supposed to be complete is our absolute most busiest time. And personally, I have to stand and lose $100,000 if I have to be completely closed. So I'm hoping that when they come to that conclusion that they think about doing the Bridge Avenue side first, it also loses the Anderson House. So quite a few, quite a few other people would be affected. And then I would make a quick comment on the letter to the editor that I'm sure everybody read about short-term licensing. And please do not let Connie and Jeff's comments stop you from moving forward. I commend her for finding somebody in that field stepping up to the plate and speaking out. I just wish that she could show up more because Connie and Jeff are one of the, the top people that I would personally refer to because they've done a phenomenal job with renovating homes and keeping things clean and up and up. What she may not understand is from the perspective of a bed and breakfast or a hotel motel, what we've had to do for years. So I just hope that you keep moving forward and that more people follow suit if they're actually licensed with a health license. I commend them. And if I can usually see the license, I will fill them off and they'll never be without money. Because I only refer to the people that I know that are properly licensed. So she had a lot of great comments in here as well. And one of the big things is making sure that and I'm sure it has to go to the county, having property tax classifications correct. So I know personally, some of them are still listed as residential seasonal, which means they may personally be living in their home part of the time. And that is not the case. If I understand correctly, they will be licensed as commercial properties like I had to be licensed since they don't live there. It is, it is an actual business. So that's one of the main things. And then just keeping moving forward and as Andrea said, keeping people more up to date and offering a lot of other opportunities to learn instead of just saying, go to the website or show at City Council. Because I know for many, they don't like the backlash that they feel and I feel it almost every day. So I just commend them to, you guys keep doing the, the job you're doing. I appreciate it. It's going to make Wauwawashe better and the level playing field. There is such a thing as that. So with that and lastly, Tony, would you happy? My treat is gone.
And just to kind of, first, your council members are always available. You don't have to show up at City Hall to reach out to us. You know that we are, we are available. Our phone numbers are all listed on the city's webpage. That's our email. So don't hesitate to reach out when you have questions. We won't always have an answer right away. The street project is a great example. That is super complex as you know, we may be being here, but we'll certainly try to get you that next level of information. Sorry to interrupt.
Our school and the street kitchen in Wauwawashe regarding the 2023 street improvement project have a few comments. So the proposed closure, as I understand it, from May to October 2023, that costs 80% of our revenue. So for 2023, we would basically be impacting that, the majority of our revenue. Visitor foot traffic to the National Eagle Center makes up a large percent of our customer count and I'm not sure how sure we're going to get there. Restaurants and bars are still recovering financially from COVID. And in addition, inflation has reduced our total customer count 2020 by 10 to 15%. And I think we all know that we're facing a recession coming up here. Employee hiring, employee hiring and retention is a major issue in our business. We would be open seven days a week in both downtown Wauwawashe locations if they were available staff. So please keep that in mind. So we have experience with the road closure and the impact to a restaurant. We own the Lake House on Peppin. And the Highway 61 closure in Lake City in 2020 impacted our revenues. In fact, they were down 60% the week after the road was closed. We were promised proper signage and access, which was never delivered. Workers, in fact, blocked access to the restaurant. In some cases, we, as owners, had to wait 10 to 15 minutes to get across the road and we received no support from the city leadership. We had an opportunity to meet the owners of a local pizza place in Zorro Falls. They had their road closed out in front. As a result, they had to close their business and basically sell their equipment. And that constitutes 25% of the restaurants in Zorro Falls. So just please, again, keep that in mind. So our anticipated impact of the closure of Silver Shark Saloon, which we would have to given our, the impact of the road closure to our business, would be difficult for customers, employees, and tenants. We have four apartments to access our building, which would require our business to shut down. This would, it's a severe reduction in customer counts, which would require our business to shut and 80% loss of revenue would require our businesses to shut. There's also costs to shut down, including fixed costs such as mortgage, insurance, utilities, taxes, but no offsetting revenue, which could result in bankruptcy. We would have to lay off employees as a result of this and the issue there is rehiring or hiring new employees when, due to the current reduced labor market. These are our friends, neighbors, and please keep those individuals in mind. Customers will form new patronage habits. So when we, when we close our business, regulars, other people will find other places to go and eat. And reopening will require our customer base to be rebuilt, requiring additional costs to supporting revenue, without supporting revenue. Increased costs in taxes and assessments without revenue to cover these new costs. The, the Zorro Falls mayor and city council were able to find state and federal funding to offset their increase in tax assessment as a result of the road projects where there were zero assessments, but the road closure still again caused a difference to the revenue income. So what we need, we would like to delay the project until the economy and labor improvements. Do not include the sidewalks as a scope of the project. Conduct shutdown of the road in phases. This was in the July report that that was under consideration. So conduct in phases, maybe one street a year. And possibly, if possible, keep the parking lane open to traffic each way. So there's the main lot, the main road, you can see it in the presentation, and then parking lanes, if the construction could be completed, the terrible road with the sewer and water. Keep those lanes open on the sides and allow cars to move by. Before initiating the project, find the grant monies to cover all costs, propose tax assessments for struggling businesses, and a plan for the city to ensure continued tourism and save consistent access to businesses that conform to ADA and mental health department requirements for the duration of the project.
Thanks for coming to us and that for us. Would you, would you visit type it up? Would you be willing to share it?
I, I can do that.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. All right. We'll return to our agenda. Are, any changes or additions from staff or members of council?
Yeah, can we pull item number nine, 8.9 out of the consent document?
Eight, nine is a criminal justice center lease. We'll place that under general business 10.5. Anything further? Okay, we have a lot to discuss. I don't want to belabor us with a terribly long presentation, but I want to say thanks so much to the chamber volunteers and staff for an amazing September Fest. Lots of traffic, lots of great events. I know there's a lot of interest in how that'll work next year with the streets project, but that is a creative group. So I'm sure they're already thinking about that. Let's see. Thanks to Lisa for all the work on the community gardens. I mean, there's still, there's still pumpkins in the gardens, but it was a very good year. The food share has shown some slowing in September as compared to August, but they still have many needs. Are, they're facing inflation like everybody else. So they can get some of their food from food banks at a reasonable cost, although that food source, that supply has been disrupted. Things that usually are very available are flour and oil, but for some reason, been difficult to find. So I'm going to send to all councilor, have it sent by staff, can report where they're at. I do have good news. Couple of things are really good. We got a I do have good news. Couple of things are really good. We got a Blenheim Community Boost Grant for cities under three thousand for fifty thousand dollars. That's going to go toward community projects. It's not going to be able to lower the levy, sorry, guys. But it will be available to community groups to make application for. We didn't even expect to hear about that until December. So I was just up late last night thinking about, we should probably start meeting with Ben to think about the terms of that program. But the good news is we have that fund to work with and figure that programming out for even this year, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Thanks for everyone working.
Yeah, yeah. It's really, it's really wonderful. I mean, those of us who went to the Blenheim Leadership Program are really sad to hear through this application that they're no longer going to do the residential leadership program because they don't feel like it's equitable, which is understandable. Not everybody can take a week off. We were really lucky to get the variety of people from Wabashaw and Kellogg that did. But a lot of people just, that would be an absolute nonstarter. And when I mentioned that to Ben Strand, who was a Blenheim alumni also, he said, you know, it's not a bad thing if it puts more money into these small communities. They've been trying to help all these years. So there's a nice press release. We'll get that out to our local press and the Post Bulletin. Very, very, very grateful for that. I just got an email when I sat down that the holiday train is happening. So my kids will be very excited about that, although they're almost too old to care. But it is going to be December eleventh, so they'll be back in person. That's a big deal for our food shelf. They always deliver. Through COVID, they have continued to give us thousands of dollars Canadian Pacific has. But really makes a big difference when people come out for that concert to bring actual donations, not fair fools. So that's good. And then the childcare grant is going very successfully. And I'm sure John would tell you that here when he does his port theory update. But something else we've wanted to do for a long time is just to simply have an appreciation event for these providers. They're hidden businesses and they are, they're not appreciated as much as they should be. They put everybody's children is in their care into employment. They're really important to the stability of families. And so we wanted to say thank you. We had an event planned for May of twenty twenty. I couldn't know what happened there. So we finally have it back on the calendar. It'll be at the library on November second, and we'll have more information about that soon. That's all for me. And we'll take Caroline's report. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you committee reports and I'll start with utilities.
Sure. I'll need some time during the public hearing for the, we had a lengthy discussion on internal funding for the project. So I'll just give a recap to everybody on that, but I'll wait until the agenda items. So other than that, nothing else is on the list.
Blenheim?
Yeah, so we approved this. So the solar burn is up there right behind Stiglin's house. We had some, we finalized the material for short term rentals, which will be going next week to the final commission for approval. And then we discussed briefly about small kind of limited mining ordinance and giving that point in mining in small, small increments. But we have a meeting next Tuesday.
Board authority, I guess we didn't, we didn't request one for, good, tell us one, yay.
Court authority grants, we've raised the number twenty-seven. They approved two nine thousand dollar childcare grants for new childcare providers. They reviewed the RFP and revolution for the housing study and discussed additional funding could result in a long program. Dan is putting together the application to send to USDA. I'm looking for letter of support to go on with that.
Was he looking for business letters of support?
Yeah.
He had some. So business, business is super definite condition using those funds. Great. And who am I forgetting? Parks, Connie, Parks and Streets?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We talked about twenty twenty-three street project, a little bit on the street commission. We went through the NSC project, which is getting really close to wrap up our page today. We have to review signage and striping, so we're kind of coordinating whether we can get that done in a timely manner. And then I discussed the street commission about the two thousand one truck that we're replacing. And they decided to take the trade in price of twenty-six thousand plus a cut in sales tax of the new truck instead of putting it on auction and taking a risk. So they decided to do that. I don't know if we want that to come to council or to council, so I'll pay with that decision. It's been a long time since we talked about that. Otherwise, we'll run with that. Parks, we talked about RP increases. We had a ten to fifteen percent increase across the board, so to speak, to match what's going on in other places. So that is, I don't know, that I don't think. Okay, so those are included, both these can't be all. Everything. And then there's discussion about food tree utilities, since the street's going to be tore up. So we're kind of taking a bunch of bathrooms and watering sewer in that spot. You know, that was decided not for the restroom, so we got some more discussion to handle there. And we have a memorial tree donation. That's on it.
Anything from fire or police that you want us to have an update on? All right, very good. Then we will have Caroline's administrative report and a lot of anniversaries.
Yeah. So, Joe, do you want to start with your anniversaries? Someone's picture is missing here because they didn't want their picture shared, so.
Kenny, Kenny Jacobs is, it's two year anniversary with us. He came in with four years' experience from Plainview before he made the wife decision to come play with the good guys. He's been really happy with the addition of him to our department. Very reliable, thorough with his work, good report public. And he recently took the role as the TCD coordinator for the county. I know we will run with that. Like he's done everything else. Next guy is Sergeant Randy Wagler, and I have to keep it short because he's going to be arguing with me. So I would say he's been with our department for sixteen years. And he was promoted to sergeant seven years ago. On a department our size, that is probably the most difficult position within an apartment. And he's been a rock and a workforce for us, available day and night, extremely knowledgeable officer. We're lucky to have him with us. He's also the phaser instructor, so not only our department, but other departments in county. And he's the trainer of that and the jail. And he doesn't leave you go with us, so.
Thank them both.
Don't we read Jessica? Okay. So we got together and described it. Jessica is an amazing asset to our team with a heart of gold. She is a hard worker, creative, and always giving back to the community through her efforts around cancer, people with disabilities, and the humane society. On the day, on a day to day basis, she has a critical role in managing the city's accounts receivable and accounts payable. And Tyler is with us here, and he's been here for three years as well. Tyler grew up in Wabashaw, and his passion for helping the city of Wabashaw thrive and grow is and is evident in his work and how he approaches each task. He not only oversees the city's finances, but supports many community efforts from the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, Staffing the Port Authority, Rotary Club, and more. And he's always willing to take on a new task from HVAC inspector, graphic design artist, or to teach fellow staff shortcuts in Excel. And he always carries the word for best dressed for the holidays, so. Just real briefly, we had a top of an event under the bridge. That was a success. Gave out free popcorn, talked to a lot of people. We were thought we were getting more HVAC grant money, and now the state of Minnesota is saying, wait, give us a couple of months to figure that out. And then we've applied for two planning grants for the housing study in the Wabashaw Kellogg Trail Connection. And Tony, I guess I have an update for you. Your Veterans Park project is delayed due to staffing issues. And then I'm still working on some things with an Eagle Center grant and exploring, just keep exploring variety of funding opportunities. So we completed a market study for all of city staff. The study found a couple positions were paid below market, most were within market, and a few were slightly higher than market. So we're going to just try to create a system to kind of get everyone on the same even playing field with that. Nothing else of note? The rest of the updates are in the presentation.
We'll get to that. So that, we have our consent agenda absent number nine. So we have the Big Joe Alley one way discussion, one way approval. The approval for the city of Wabashaw to pay for pre-own costs for the Barge Trail project. Veterans Park Flagpole, flagpole grant purchase. We have COVID warrants, the chambers gambling permit for bingo, the resolution amending, physician classifications. Take a look at that if you haven't. Approval of the submission of the SRCG application for ten thousand dollars for the housing market study. Approval to fill through vacant public works positions, the staff's opinion that we can't do without those. And criminal justice center lease has been pulled. We would ask for the, to accept the resignation of Steve Adler and approve Samantha Mueller as full-time EMT. Our minutes from September sixth and the fuller agreement that we reviewed in our September meeting. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
We have a motion from Tim with a second from Brian. Any further? Need to take a roll? Very good. Stella?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Wallerick?
Yes.
Spockham?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Meyer? You're on mute.
Yes.
Dean, I forgot to ask you if you want to state your location. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm at two eighteen Main Street West, Wabashaw, Minnesota.
All right, now we have a public hearing, a resolution on ordering the improvement preparation.
You guys are muted.
Okay. Somehow I muted us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next few steps on the process that's being used to review the working process. On the project with discussions, there's never asked me as a whole, a public hearing, but probably a group of hearings to receive public comment that are related to the outcome is that kind of identifying the study for the total coverage to the whole of the project. And then we have to consider ordering the results in cooperation and in the specs I have to do. What we said less than we did earlier this summer, the results of that presented at the open house and at community council meetings. So then we'll be implementing the short, mentioning these people that basically studying the project components, the scope of the project, and then by estimating cost for the project at once, and then also estimating the overall, not having assessed, and then we need to. A quick summary of the project, we would be writing for this project to be in the mission of why the sewer that lies on these streets that are involved for the construction. The sewer main were installed in nineteen thirty through a fortified clay pipe over time and become brittle and crack. And then becomes susceptible to river intrusion and to source of the water, with the particular load movement effect. The water main was installed in nineteen thirteen, so it's an extremely old water main. It will become susceptible to breaks over time. However, as I experienced, the number of water breaks along the stretch. One of the strategies that was identifying the water supply panels that seemed to replace four of the water mains that will reduce the water losses in handling of the system. So generally, the project is going to entail new construction of the water in the sanitary students project. We'll be extending the service lines from the lane line to help to the individual properties. And then we'll be including replacements on the streets, the curb and other, the sidewalks and the strong sewer. Part of this process, we're learning sidewalks and the ADA contact factor, where the little strong walls tend, how those work to address some of those ADA components. And then the last report of the project was in streetscape elements. I'm who, I'm an element that you are not going to hear this again for us, some costs associated. We've been in the process, we've said we provided in the past. I will know that the focus of the research has been available on the website for, for the public to review. I gave you the estimated cost, roughly cost down by component. Even the cost you see there, the surface improvements, including the street curb and other sidewalk projects. Sanitaries or water and strong sewer, some fundamental removal, the work that is associated with those changes. The lighting improvements and the streetscape improvements, originally we estimated those numbers. And it's part of a work that human on the steering committee and the streetscape owners that have recommended it's part of the levels work and the total amount of the project here. Then we have three other smaller improvements that when we partner with this project, that were part of the base project. When we get into opinion at how the assessments are happening, we can see why those are the most. Ultimately, funding for this project will come from a combination of state, found by local sources. And it's part of the capital finance plan discussions, and I will know the assessments for our project. So as I said, special things have been articulated of unopposed to this project. This is in line with the city board's community policy. This policy provides the methodology to calculate the assessment amounts and the individual assessments that are used in improvement projects. For this project, it is considered a class D improvement. So within the policy that breaks the assessment, the improvement structure, which means that all the street improvements that a storm sewer is of course, that whole road improvement, includes the water and sewer improvements, each of those being assessed to probably based on the community base. Within the policy, it says the street and storm are raised from twenty percent of the special cost per time for one special cost. And adjustment come the cost that was ahead of that table. This is a collector of property that's going to vote, the assessment cost is based on the cost of not, not actually materials. So we see that adjustment will be in this chart. Water and sewer are based on the rate set by the council. So four streets, it's based, it's a residential project. The typical residential project, that would be single family residential block. Then this is a commercial heavy corridor, so it's, there's practices within your policy for multi-family management cross properties that are adjusted based on the formula. It's based on front footage increments. So the smallest increment is a property that's a hundred and twenty feet in front footage or less. So the majority of the property within this floor fit within this. The majority of the properties are going to get a one or a new assessment for an assessment. Individual for the corridor as part of the preliminary process and determine what are estimated the amount that the assessment needs to be seventy-five in this floor. You see the amount of, that we've adjusted, street storm improvements, we can take twenty percent of that divided by seventy-five. So we have a projected one area, seven four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine per acre. Now within the corridor, we're estimating the assessment to range by the seventy-seven to five thousand seven hundred and seventy-four street wall. The utility assessments, we know that are raised on a permanent basis as determined by the council. Whether or not you assess is based on whether you have a connection to the utilities being replaced. So as we go through the corridor, there's going to be projections on the corner lots, that maybe front, the street project, that maybe the connection from the structures, they might be a certain assessment base. Utilizing twenty percent, we look at the sewer, we have approximately six, seven, seven, seven. We get a sewer, projected sewer assessment of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars per acre. For the water, we have a projected assessment at two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars per acre. So the individual assessment range will be between seven hundred and fifty-five and five thousand two hundred and forty-three per property that's assessed. So something that is, despite the rights is very difficult. So the individual assessment range, if the alcohol is assigned from one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars to ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. The single unit, the ground, we can go in the ground zone for the nine thousand seven hundred and one dollars. This assessment amount is comparable for a whole construction project that I've used in some of these. So next steps tonight, we're asking a little official comment, we're letting you see any comment in that hearing, we're asking to adopt the revolution, which already we've been in a conversation for many steps. There's also a recorder tonight, that we're asking to improve the overall sustainable order of the final design. Just a couple of questions made, and I was like, we had a lot of questions that have addressed this part of the preliminary process that will be addressed in the next phase at the construction forum, so water and sewer connections, we've had in the work of property, we're to focus where there's shared sewer connections, and then we, throughout this question, we are coming to evaluate those, and to present, practically separate street services. A D A compliance is the only one where to use at sidewalks in downtown, that you need compliance will have to work for elevation, and what we can achieve in that process. We also know there's a number of properties that have a little special or needs, because they maybe have steps or ramps outside of the front of the building, so we'll have to look through that, start that process. And lastly, I'm having the, this is project phasing, and it's to access during construction, and how that functions. Well, as we're going through the design process, we will get into phasing, but makes sense from the two instructions, and also having leaning on access to construction for properties, looking at business owners, access to businesses, et cetera, as we're putting that together. And I will know that we did send out a business owner questionnaire as part of the last notice, and we got one here tonight. I'm receiving none of those back, and the intent is to provide that connection, so that we can move through the phasing, we understand what, how this is operating. Then I also want to refer to, and I think we should be prepared more specifically to business owners, on what constructions, what is the general nature of names, and we don't have all the details yet, to build the three, that helps me with a sense of what's coming throughout the construction process. Not even on a slide, but other next steps as it relates to assessments, it's almost begin through final design, we'll go through the bidding process, and each step along the way, we can point back to, before we move on. As we get the bids back, we compare the final assessment, we'll do what's called the assessment parent, which is just the next thing around, before we ask them to adopt those assessments, so there's, there's many more steps along the process.
Well, I think project phasing, or the staging of the project, is very important, and we'd like to know more about it as soon as we can. And I know it's going to affect the bidding, because the more staging and phasing you put in, bid costs generally go up, but hopefully there's a happy medium that we can reach on that.
So that, and then we're going to be doing some additional standard questions. So I see the F A Qs on the project website, again, for anybody who doesn't know, if you just, if you just Google Waukesha street reconstruction, you'll come to this project website that Katie mentioned, and within the documents is the F A Q, which as you said is general, and you should be signing up for email content, certainly, when the city has city-level information that we can share, we always do try to share it through Facebook, primarily the city's Facebook, we really want people to be going to the city's Facebook page for tiny city information, but do sign up for email on project if you're a business owner, we won't be doing business-related blasts through Facebook. We want you to give missions, because it's available, and that will be through the, through the project management teams.
Katie, I have one, one question, kind of in reference to Craig's comments. In terms of phasing, are you, when you say phasing, are you talking about, you know, that still we anticipate the bulk of the project is going to be done next year, and you have timeline, I don't think phasing means really stretching it out over a three-year time period.
So as of right now, when I have one construction, around one construction season, what phasing means is those nine blocks will get broken up into two pieces, so they will open up on one face, you'll do internally, so the street will basically get back up to asphalt, before letting you on to the next phase, and so, so the entire summer construction season is not over at all, over the entire time, it's going to be another week's chase.
So are you, I thought about breaking it into three, three pieces, Main Street, Bridge Street, and Amherst, thought about that?
We're, we're starting to look at that part, and as we, the utilities are from a constructability perspective, and so we'll kind of, we'll keep that whether it's two, three, or more, basements. I think one of the things is that we want to consider access down, whether we want to break Main Street, and then multiple, have a break in Main Street, or whether we're all in the street at once, so that's going to be more.
Any questions for Katie, otherwise we'll have the public hearing.
Just one final comment, I think, you know, if businesses are, you know, requesting some sort of monetary assistance, it probably belongs more or less with the Port Authority, which is limited funds available, but we did talk about, like, business interruption, but that would really be kind of a Port Authority discussion, in reference to some sort of program to help businesses, but probably something John could put on for a future discussion item at Port Authority.
We can do the public hearing first, I'll, I'll chime in on that, utilities issue afterwards.
Thank you. All right, so we welcome any public comments to the public hearing, and we're opening the hearing at 6:56? Start the public hearing, excuse me, 6:56, I'm in the old time zone, we meet late, 6:56.
Does anyone on?
Oh, that's a close thing.
Yeah, I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more.
Sure thing, yeah.
From our proponent, so we're just going to leave kitchen. From a business perspective, planning is very important to us, we have to know how to react, when to react, how long the duration we need to act. Hearing things like, well, it'll be a few weeks, we don't know how much, phasing, we don't know how that's going to be, this is impossible for us to plan for. I don't know when my road is going to be torn up, when my building, I don't know how long will be torn up, I don't know how long it'll have to be shut down, I don't know what to do with my employees. When I look at this in my mind, we need to shut down a whole summer. That's my plan right now. So phasing, great, great idea. If, if it's phasing for the summer, we need to know very quickly, and very specifically, how long our business will be impacted. And I guarantee every business, that this is impacted, needs to know that too. Otherwise, they, they don't know what to do. So again, I think, or we're hoping, that this can be phased through several years, to minimize negative impact. And I would say that, you know, Waukesha needs to be careful, because you think you're saving a bunch of money, but at what cost? At what cost to downtown, at what cost to tourism, people making habits that go all the places, be very close in the back, and right now nearly impossible to get staff there. So it may not even be feasible for us to reopen. So after everything that's happened over the last few years, you know, this is another body of, that may be too difficult, or too, too hard to absorb. So I just wanted everyone to keep that in mind, that, I, I think that it's important, the exchanges are important, but I'm just concerned not, not enough input from businesses is fine to this decision just yet. So a pause may be something that needs to be considered. That's all, thank you, thank you.
No further?
Friend of yours, someone who's sixty for Daniel, I have to thank Kent and Carla for speaking up, because those, those are absolutely true, and without restaurants, bars, retail shops, overnight places are going to take a huge shift. People might still come and stay, but as that newspaper article said, five-star reviews makes a great person. It's absolutely true, I can track them on, and stay open, and entertain, and do the best I can, but all it takes is one person, you need to give them a huge discount, to say, yeah, great place, too bad for Waukesha, they're really going to take a beating, and they're going to go back more, or somewhere else. So I don't know how it can be done, but really hoping and praying that not only Port Authority, but the Chamber, the C V B really steps up to the plate, and does pay a lot of marketing for the specific businesses that are members, so that we can survive through this, because it's going to be difficult. So knowing that a little bit more absolutes, like Carla spoke of, would be super helpful, because I can't even take reservations until the next year, I'm pausing, and they're wondering why I'm pausing, like, do I have other business, and I, with integrity, can't take a reservation, knowing that I might have to cancel it, and they banked on it, because they hoped to hear the dance, to make sure they're staying with me, so the more we can hit the absolutes, the better.
Anybody further? Certainly Carla's point, there's still time for feedback, make sure you're reaching out to Katie, especially with those questionnaire items, the questionnaire itself is on the F A Q, but if it doesn't speak to your concerns, make sure you voice what your concerns are, if your concerns are to the Chamber, obviously direct to the Chamber. And we want to hear that too. Anybody further?
Does anyone on Zoom wish to speak?
If you've never done that before, it's a couple, somebody I don't know, you may have muted yourself, just go to the lower left, and there's a little red microphone, slash grid, if you click that, you'll be unmuted. Give them a little time, sometimes Zoom is a little unholy, so we'll, we'll rush. Dean, are you still able to hear us?
I am.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody online has audio. Any further public comments in the hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:02. As I said before, don't, don't hesitate to keep reaching out to your council members, to just respond to the, the absolutes. We are to a place where they can pursue the absolutes, but the fact that this action is tonight, so what, what we need is for council to say, yes, we're moving forward with this, and then all of those future actual design development activities can happen, but they just can't happen until council says no, so we have that actually for us. Do you want comments on?
Yeah.
Yeah. Until there's that sector of it?
Yeah, need a few minutes, you don't have that spreadsheet, maybe, on your computer by chance, do you?
I do, I can.
I can probably verbalize it.
Yeah.
So we.
Seventy-two percent, it's an hour.
Okay, we met yesterday, and got the same presentation that Tyler gave us in the capital improvement plan meeting at La Catca Library, and so one of our members noticed the division of where the funding is going to come from within the city. So Tyler, we kind of pointed out, the, the bottom line is sewer and water, the utilities fund, is paying roughly seventy-two percent of the costs, other than the grants and the county contribution, and so then the general fund would cover the other roughly twenty-eight percent of the costs, which would come from the levy and
Assessments.
and fees and assessments and things like that to the public. And so one of our members was questioning how the improvements are split. How is it that sewer and water is responsible for such a large chunk of the improvements? And so we, we sat and did rough math on things in a group, and so you figure all the underground infrastructure, your sewer pipes, your, your labor, your services, things like that, and then you have sidewalks, curb and gutter, the actual road reconstruction, the two minutes, which we would consider like your road improvements. And I, I guess our one member just couldn't fathom how sewer and water would be responsible for such a large chunk of that, and so Carolyn and I just bounced it off of Katie and did some, asked some questions, and I guess what it comes down to is basically the, the cost was distributed two-thirds to cities, sewer and water, and one-third to the general fund, and all the other things that I described, and really, I guess, what, what it comes down to is, Mike Uvani looked at everything, and utilities is where we have the funds to do this. We are getting rid of 900 and some thousand dollars per year in, in debt, what's the magic word I'm looking for?
Being retired.
Yeah, being retired, for building the sewer plant. So all your, all of your water, your sewer money that comes into the city, each year for the last, I don't know how many years, for the fourteen, we've been paying 900,000 dollars to that debt to build the sewer plant, so that.
There's 2013 street project too.
Oh, that was in there as well, okay. So that's expiring, and so essentially that means all that money that we've been paying on that for the last fourteen years, we will have that with the money that we bring in from city utilities. And so the way that this plan is structured is that we're going to use that to put ourselves, I guess, back in debt again, and use sewer and water funds to help fund this project. So it's not an exact division of city and waters paying for the city and water components, and, and that's it, and then the general fund and everything else will pay for the other, that's not the way it's structured. The member of our board that brought the, you know, city water funds that come in should be paying exactly for those things, and should be separate. I had a little bit of a different perspective on it. All the, all the general fund money and all the city sewer and water money is, is in the same bank account, we keep separate books on things. But I guess in my mind, it all comes down to, it's all money that belongs to the citizens, the taxpayers, and the people who pay for the utilities, and there's some charts and graphs that we were shown, specifically with sewer and water, that if we fund the projects that we have on the books right now, and then we stick to our plan of water and sewer increases at comfortable levels over the, over the next, how far out, that sewer and water fund will take a dive as we're funding, but it will recover, and, and we can see that. The alternative, if we said all the guts of the road that are not utilities will be funded with the general fund, what that would amount to is a higher tax levy, and so you would see significant property tax increases because of that, because we would need to use that money to fund this project rather than the utilities, Mike. And in discussion, we just thought we would lay that out for everybody and make that apparent, that this is the, the plan that we have set out, so that we don't have to burden the tax levy with that, we could use other resources that the city has to help fund, I guess, non-utility aspects of the project. And so I just wanted to, to throw that out, so everybody was aware of that, and I can take questions if you have any.
I mean, I would guess it came up in the discussion that absent the ancient utilities, this project wouldn't be such an urgent project, and I mean, we're not, it's not a big popular project, it's really, it's really utilities, a very, very, very longstanding utilities reconstruction.
Yeah, you, you got to dig the street up regardless, and so a lot of that cost for digging the street out and putting it back is going to be absorbed in utilities costs, or the funds that we used to pay for.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all on the same team. Yeah, we may be leaning on sewer and water for this project, but there's probably other times where sewer and water lean on general funds, but we all have to play together, and then we're all stuck with this problem, so, and as you say, sewer and water at the heart of this, this project.
Anything further, any comments from council or questions for Katie? We have before us the final design and resolution to order the street improvement.
Hey, Katie, when do you think the phasing part of this, and timing, and signage, and all that stuff is? Hey, when do you think, uh, the phasing part of this and timing and signage and all that stuff is going to be presented?
Oh, yes, that was my question. Is there other, is there other?
We need to consider signage and all that, and we need it super later, right?
I think we're moving forward and start working on the dating plan. Everyone moving into the environment, we have been so long ahead this year for the back and sign process. Um, so I believe through fall.
So what I'm really asking is there a dead date that says, uh, this date will happen?
We'll need to find out when it's going to be first. Um, and then we're also looking at some processes and some different reasons, so that would be important as well.
Okay, thanks. All right, we have a resolution before us. That would resolve that the improvements necessary cost effective and feasible detail in the feasibility report, then the improvements hereby ordered as proposed in the council resolution. Uh, that such improvement has no relationship to the comprehensive municipal plan. The opening would be designated as engineer, and the engineer will prepare the plans and specifications for the making of the improvement, and the city council would declare its official intent to reimburse itself with the cost of the improvement from the proceed of taxes and bonds. Does anybody want to comment on that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Who would first do a second?
I'll second.
If any other discussion? Do you have any updates for us? It's kind of tangential, but I know we're all concerned about it, the, the, um, public facilities piece of it.
Well, we found out some bad news, which is, was if there was a bonding bill, we would have been funded for that loan interest financing, we're competitive. So, um, we were USDA funding, but one of the challenges is because the county didn't want to contribute more to this project, we decided that this remain a county road so that they. Um, there are some concerns with, um, you know, then we would now own the road to get the USDA funds.
We would have to own.
We would have to own the road and then we're responsible for the road. And then the other thing is just timing around the environmental review. So that's USDA financing is not looking promising, but it buys us a half a percent less on our borrowing rate, so.
Go with pursuing.
So, I don't know, Katie's saying that.
Investigating, yeah.
It's not likely. Um, but what is likely is we hope that if there is a bonding bill next year, there's a small, that we're trying to get more information if there's hope that we could retroactively get that lower interest financing that we had originally planned on. So I think, um, I still need to run some numbers. I, I mean, a half a percent better financing amounted to about twenty thousand a year, or twenty years. So it sounded like quite a bit, but then there's just so many bureaucratic hurdles and it would delay the project. And just, I think for the, the public too, we did consider delaying this project a year so we could wait for the better interest financing. What the negative implication of that was losing, was it a one-point-two million dollar grant that we got from the state of Minnesota? So if we don't start construction next year, we lose one-point-two million dollars in grant funding. And so that was why we decided to continue to pursue it despite not getting the loan interest financing, is not wanting to lose that grant. And we did explore, could we lose that money? But once again, like every grant, they're running on cycles, so.
That's the financing piece of it. Do you have a first and a second? Do any other discussion or thoughts?
Um, just.
Oh, do we have any other considerations initial here? Whether we could do this in three phases, you know, like do one street one year, one street other one, and get any cost estimates?
So we did talk to Linda because our ask, uh, change the project.
They're having a hard time hearing. The question was, did we look at it officially? The mic?
Yes, my is terrible, it's insane.
Okay, sorry, our mic is not working well tonight. Sorry, everybody online. It's kind of echoing in here and then it's not getting through them.
If you were to change the project, the behind it, that our funding, and the problem is, the issue there is that it was a contract process. Um, it's a time limit of those one hundred dollars. And so, uh, the grant is applied for all new lots. If you don't start to change that, it becomes a issue. I guess that, that's the issue with changing the support of the project. It was kind of accidental. In order to make use of that, you know, to change the support of that construction. And there's issues or reasons for that.
All right, any further discussion? And we need to submit a majority, and then roll call vote for this item. Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we'll call for a roll.
Fellow?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Alrick?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yes.
Drian?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody who sat with us. I know this is a long process and we welcome your comments every time you're here, but also throughout. Now we have general business two, this, I think we have Port here with us. There's you online. Hey, I only met you on the street very briefly, Port. Welcome, you can come up to the podiums, we can hear you. Port's gonna, uh, address the Chamber of Commerce and do a little financial presentation for all of us and probably introduce some.
Also, uh, I'm Port Shiffrin, director for Wawa Shop from the Chamber. Uh, in front of you tonight, I left, uh, the CDB and Chamber 2023 budget, uh, the 2021 P and L, both CDB and Chamber, and a copy of the Wawa Shop from this day. Uh, the budget numbers that are in front of you are a compare from 2019. Except for ground yield, I won't release that in 2023. Uh, looking at the CDB budget, uh, we can see the city's contribution, uh, contributions and margin tax dollars. Uh, projected income, the total projected income from various places and Chamber contributes. Uh, shows that everyone involved has a state investment in the city Wawa Shop. Uh, travel guides, I know this has been a discussion, I'll do it. In my opinion, I think, um, but. If you do a quick look at the visitor guide, uh, there's no QR codes in there. Uh, the web addresses are backslashes, so it'd be nice to get all of that stuff updated. Another thing to them, like one gap is QR code stickers for the digital version. And those are going, uh, part of right here, I guess. Any type of, uh, fluctuation, just starting to realize. Things to improve on in the guide, or some of Wawa Shop's biggest draws, some of the footwork from. Wake up and, uh, arenas, camp, uh, city camp ground, promoting fishing company, water skiing, beaches, bowling, everything water related. What's on country, you need a, uh, which has, uh, one. Sixty-one, the greatest river of the road. In the back of the travel guide, uh, in that is the expanded or overlooked information. Promoting highway sixty and county roads, uh, like this, like we saw that with the old crews. More information about bicycling, UTP routes, trails, several labs for camping and horseback trails. More information on new launches of several city, city and local events, I grew up on these from the old land. Coming there, the remote, uh, field, four rounds, holiday weekend events. Just do like what July or. And the most important of the winter activities. The media, that's probably what we have to do. The travel guide is first one. That's, they're all standing the same way this year. I took a look at where they're all going and most of the travel guides that distributed locally and up in the metro area. I might expand that also, compile, radius, Wawa Shop, all their things. I want to make sure that all verbals, beer, beans, pet practices, and health, or men, make sure that they all have a fair verbal. We also want to take a look at, um, making sure that there's some health, you know, climate, also health aside. Anywhere that has, we. The Chamber website. Keep in mind that that line rank for the website is more than just a website. Uh, that's for email notifications, newsletters, uh, website posting, updates, website work. So there's quite a bit more to just the website. Also give the ten thousand dollar cut from that line rank in previous years, because we'll be doing a lot more of that at the cost. Riverboat Days Marketing, uh, we're going to increase that for the addition, uh, for the official change to the Wawa Shop project. Event advertising, um, that will be for the rest of the event, so it's going to be. Those dollars small, or those dollars will be split, uh, depending on the event demographic. Uh, print marketing, um, we still see a need for that for the mountain and that down graphics. But what we're going to do with print marketing, we're informed is we'll make sure that we've got, uh, better web addresses on there, make sure that there's QR codes on everything. That way, if you're standing scanning, you'll get a specific website. Um, we're also going to do a four thousand dollar cut to that line rank number twenty-three. And the reason why is because a lot of the money that's been spent for that print, um, we're kind of doubling up our, uh, or this is what you have in the block country guides. We're kind of hitting the same location, some of the projects as they are. So I think we're, I think we're safe to take some of that money out of those paths and spend it into other types of people, those from show. Web and social media, that's going to be for general advertising. So this would be, uh, big for winter activities. Because I see the black, uh, every time we do Wawa Shop. And we'll target snowmobile, ice fishing, downhill cross-country skiing, snowboarding, snowballing. Radio and TV, uh, we've got a little bit in there, that's going to complement the goals for the 2022 season. Uh, and last on there is the CDB contract and buy loss for the CDB, uh, required to donate for administrative and housing costs. Uh, as you can see, there's always room for advancement advertising, especially for 2023, any street project. We want to make sure that we push as many people as we can. Then last, uh, we've got the Chamber budget in there. Uh, there again, that's the average for the last two years. Um, and then we also have, uh, burn over at expense, uh, expenditures. We did do an increase in utilities to take over all the utilities for this part. Event budgets, uh, those are base budget per event. Fundraising will hopefully assume projected income for the funding. Event committees, uh, were, you know, the event committees right now. For all these committees already been used for 2023. Uh, they've been tested, built a budget, fundraiser, uh, to make the most of it. And then on the bottom line is the vision of the CDB. Any questions for me?
This is very thorough, thank you. I think we realized that we probably want to continue having you, A, come annually, but then we discovered we probably need some quarterly reports that, you know, we kind of all forgot about. And we do have Tyler as a member, so I always feel informed because he does sit on the chamber board. But if council is interested in receiving a quarterly report, I think, um, they're more than willing to do that. And then in our discussions, as we think about the budget, we met ahead of time and I offered a suggestion or a question, um, would they, you know, we were discussing that this year with what's going on in the downtown and, and wanting to continue to market Wawa Shop. It was a difficult year to take a cut to the city's contribution, but they were willing to take on Grant's Barn, uh, electric bill, which we've been historically paying, um, as kind of, you know, a compromise. So I thought that that was, um, helpful to the budget. Um, and so that's included in kind of what my current projections are, so.
Any questions, Green?
Thank you very much, thanks for being with us. Thanks, Jane. And Tyler, of course. Service to Chambers.
So this question, were we going to adopt a street date from?
Yeah, you skipped.
Did I? Thank you. Where was it?
Ten-one.
There it is, right away. Oh, our downtown, thank you, yeah, sorry about that, okay. Chamber was supposed to be ten-two, ten-one was Jonathan's presentation, resolution adopting the Wawa Shop downtown plan. And as you know, we have the, um, the detail provided, both funded and unfunded elements, um, for those for consideration within the 2023 street reconstruction project and future. So we would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution, to adopt the downtown streetscape master plan report.
Just to clarify, we're just basically officially acknowledging a document.
Plan and document, right. So as Jonathan said, for reference, let's say, um, another one of those major arterial streets is, is redone in 2026 and they think, what is lighting supposed to be on the street? And you say, look, look at the streetscape plan and it shows the lighting as it was bought through in this, in this project.
So we're not voting to fund this and do it, we're just adopting it. So I'm, I'm.
First and a second, do any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thanks for correcting me there.
Can we do a roll?
Dean? You know, the aye?
Dean?
I said aye.
Okay. Okay, I was go, I got so immersed in the chamber, I had a couple of visitors' guides carefully as I had one as a new resident. Okay, so we have, um, fee increases with a.
Well, just one question was the chamber discussion item was, I don't know, recommended cut, if any, to the chamber contribution. Do you want to take that up later when we discuss the budget or further questions?
I'd recommend a few later, I think we need another budget workshop, but that's, that's just a debate. You don't think so? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
When we've got our, when we're thinking about the full budget, it's not, it doesn't really stand alone. Okay, so fee increases, we have, uh, we have directed staff to look at fees wherever they can, as Tony mentioned. Um, the first board did approve fifteen percent increases to all the areas. Um, we do have staff consideration to that, um, some level of complaints, which is expected, right? As well as liquor licenses, so, um, campground and park related fees, but also, um, liquor licenses and both lifts.
Yeah, so if you don't mind me just highlighting a couple of changes, um, if it's blank, we're not. Um, if it's blank, we're not really changing it and that was reflected because people don't really purchase a service from the city like photocopies and faxes. Um, but one important one is proposing the ATV golf cart permit go up to $50 and that is only, um, given out every three years. Um, one issue that was raised is there's a lot of non-compliance with ATV golf permit obtaining it. And, um, so we were worried if we make it a crazy amount, we'll get further non-compliance. And I don't know, Joe, kind of your thoughts on that, but it's just, I think it's hard to monitor when you're, it's just minor, you know, I think it would be more complaint driven or someone, someone's doing something wrong, but maybe we could do more PSA announcements on that requirement that that is required. Um, and, um, another highlighted one was, um, increasing, uh, liquor licenses, where is that one? So we're doing, um, an off-sale liquor license to $250 and leaving the rest of, and then, um, an on-sale wine license to $400 is what's proposed. And then, um, sale of cigarettes to $75. So, um, just like 20 to 33% increases in those areas because they've never been adjusted before. Um, but again, you know, no, not many people are taking out a taxi cab permit in Wabashaw. So, you know, we just, we didn't bother with the ones that are more minor. Um, pool pass rates also got all of an increase. Um, I'm just trying to highlight, I mean, we try to go with even numbers, so we're going to try an adult daily rate of $5. That's a significant increase, but it's easy number. Um, it's kind of the motivation as I looked around. Smaller communities with our similar sized pool amenities are mostly $3. But again, we were under a direction from council to increase fees and are hoping that this is deterring people, a $5 fee from, from coming to the pool. Um, some smaller increases on family passes, which I'm told are the most frequently taken out passes are the family passes. Um, then, um, another kind of more major area are the two to $300 increases on waterfront and non-waterfront campsites. That's where we did receive, um, I, we raised it $50 last year, received some complaints and now it's going up by two to $300. Um, and then proposing a $100 increase on the annual boat slip fee from 1,100 to 1,200. And to everyone tried to take comparable campsites and boat slip prices and feel like these are still competitive for our area. Um, and then the rest of these got a slight increase, but not necessarily that we, we use these that much, but while we were at it, we just added an increase. And then, um, in speaking with Darren, we don't really use, there's, there's not many incidences where we're charging fees on the, for the fire department. It's more mostly incidents paid out through our contracts with the townships. So we did not put any increases for the fire department. Ambulance and EMS, we're, we're taking a look at that as part of the study that we're doing and then, um, we've got to have you speak, but uh, Ryan has discovered that we have not maybe consistently been charging a non-resident rate as we should. So he is going to look to immediately address that, start charging a non-resident rate for calls. Um, thank you, Ryan. And then, um, Wendy recommended a number of increases for building permits. Uh, 14 to 33% increases for building permits and re-ruffs. And, um, and then, yeah, all around just increases on everything via planning. And then, um, Joe came up with some increases to parking violations and habitual barking and disorderly conduct. Um, he came up with some, um, modest increases. So in talking to Wendy, this is part of our ordinance. And the problem with our ordinance is it has these specific numbers all over the place. So we need to modify our ordinance to say, refer to be scheduled approved by council and then every year it's just on one list. Um, and we're going to have to get rid of all the places in the ordinance where it, um, specifically refers to it. So parks took on a lot of increases last year, but, um, liquor licenses and and others were left off and now we just try to be really comprehensive and applying these fee increases everywhere. And just a lot of the discussion we had is just, you know, we obviously don't want to deter demand. Um, and I think where we think we probably will get complaints about the increases are from the campground residents and a letter was included and potentially, um, from the liquor license increase. And maybe for the pool increase, I don't know. Um, so those are kind of. But, and that, do you foresee any complaints about non-compliance with taking out a bill, building permit due to the fee increases or you feel comfortable there? Okay. Tony or Joe, do you guys want to add anything about fee increases?
Since it's an ordinance change, don't have to be a public hearing, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we could speak with legal on it, but my assumption is that we would be making edits to the language that references the prices, but yet not removing it because it'll be added into the fee schedule. There's certain areas, like in planning, we call out specific things in planning, but it would make more sense to just have it referenced in the fee schedule that's approved at the beginning.
Like you're changing the ordinance.
We're not changing, we're just changing a dollar amount. Yeah, so.
I can't imagine.
What you want to do, what you'd want to do is just remove the number amount and add it to the fee schedule. Yeah, we could probably do it all at the first meeting of the year.
I just want to say now that's like doing it. I mean, we, we, we go through this and we look at our budget this year and expenses are going up and then we have to turn around and pass it on. We don't like it any more than anybody else likes paying it or. But some of those, some of those amounts on there too, like some of the stuff that we don't deal with, like hazmat, different things and some of the street items, we should still take a look at that because if people comes in and something happens, that's part of the schedule that we can feed off. So just.
We can look at that too. Um, and Tony is considering adding a non-resident brush dump permit. But again, sort of monitoring who didn't take a permit out that's using our brush dump and is not a resident is going to be a project in itself. Tony has volunteered to watch the video cameras, but you know, we have, we want to set, uh, set a, a non-resident brush dump fee. And if you didn't get your permit and you're, and we also discussed charging businesses, tree businesses and landscaping bil, businesses for dumping brush at the brush dump. But when it was brought up in years prior, council had a concern that those would then be passed on to the residents. So, I don't know.
I didn't get a response back from Greenfield County to a native to now participate in our cost for the brush dump. And I would have to guess that at least comes on their brush dump, it's from the San Prairie, because a lot of it goes right by my house, I see it. And I see it on the camera, so. We're, we're going to have to do something, I mean, otherwise we're just going to keep paying for county and township to provide them services.
Right.
Yeah, my only comment is we need to look at Greenfield. There's certain reasons like Greenfield and our stuff without paying something or contributing something.
Well, Tony went to them and said, instead of having us charge all your residents, why don't you participate in paying for it? And he got a no on that.
Well, then we need to start looking at finding these people or something. I mean, I know it's a lot of work, but.
I think that's the plan would be to charge a high non-resident permit fee and then actively monitor the situation and start charging people for not paying their amount. I think in plain view, it's a hundred dollars a trip if you're a non-resident, a hundred dollars every time you use their brush dump. Yeah, so.
Okay, I guess my comment is, I get, I get the need for a review of it universally. I don't really like nickel and diming things like pool. And even liquor licenses still at this early time of recovery. I, I think we could have a discussion about some of these further, but, um, certainly some of them require hot, like significant costs on our part. I mean, leasing land, staffing, controlled burns, and it's not, it's not insignificant what's going on there. I wouldn't want to deter pools to try to recruit two bucks from somebody who's probably going to spend those $2 in concessions anyway if you just let them keep it. So. That's my two cents, but. So there's the element of the ordinance, but that seems pretty straightforward. And then I think Tony's town is a good one with the ones that we don't see very often that relate to emergency preparedness going to be reviewed and I've seen some work on the non-residential. Okay, anything further on that item? Budget discussion for 2023, it's kind of all about the budget, right? So, um, as you know, yeah, as at this time of year, we know it's all about the budget. So on our September 2nd, uh, workshop, no, that was our meeting, our regular meeting. We set the preliminary levy at 15.7%. That assumed a 10% increase in healthcare rates for employees. Last Friday, the city received notification healthcare rate increases are 50% for 2023. So changing that health insurance increase from 10 to 50%, which is 75% to the city and 25% to the employee, increased the city's expenses by $92,586 and adjusted the levy by 4.3, which went over our original 15.7. So with modifications made to lower the levy, uh, higher contributions from utilities, $60,000 in a one-time ARPA fund uh, payment, I guess, to ourselves and making other minor cuts to 2023 levy increase percentage that's now at 13.9. And so we want to gauge interest in a further budget workshop in the month of October.
And also, we would like to reconvene the personnel committee in lieu of the 50% increase. Obviously, we're looking at other health insurance options and what we found out is that when you're given a 50% increase, no one else is going to want to bid on providing your health insurance except for a guaranteed rate program and those are set. So there's four options, a range of plans, and so it's really kind of neat, nuanced and detailed. So we just wanted to take that to personnel, get feedback on what they want to offer and then we can get some final numbers. For the healthcare, I would say, um, something that is interesting to me is that they have a, a health insurance plan where you have access to Mayo and a health insurance plan where you don't have access to Mayo and there's about a 20% rate increase whether or not you use Mayo. So I think on one, it was 66%. If it was with Mayo, like, uh, it would be a 28% increase without Mayo. Um, and so that's kind of where we have a department head meeting. So we're going to ask how many employees value their access to Mayo and then I think one of the directions we got from the personnel committee was offering a range of options for employees and that is possible where we could offer four different plans. One might be, you know, a better plan, but might require then you get less of an HSA program, um, contribution and then a less plan and a, a higher HSA or we could come up with a menu of options, but either way, just kind of preliminary, I don't think that we can go back to 10% and still without really saddling a lot of. I just, yeah, it's not looking like we can get to 10% as we had assumed. Um,
So what's the temperature council for an October budget meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm fine.
We're on it.
And then I'll be contacting the personnel this week because we need to make decisions if we want to switch insurance companies.
What is your enrollment deadline?
Uh, we need to discontinue with P no later than December 1st and we need to be making progress in November.
All right, um, with that, we have the donations.
Number five, 10-5.
Oh, 10-5, I missed another one, guys. Um, 10-5 was the removed, uh, consent agenda item eight nine criminal justice center release. So your link to that item is up in the consent agenda.
Right, so this sparked my interest because
Thank you, guys.
We went to the county meeting. We used to pay $8,000 a year due to services by criminal justice center and we still put in, uh, you know, we have an employee that works the, the window down there. Um, so the county and their incident was and decided to, um, charge us the same rate as returning some other, uh, state agency. And so it went from 8,000 to 12,000, which is a 50% increase. Okay, maybe we have to live with that because the state was going, but then I got the notion, the, the information from the consent agenda that the 12,000 is only for the first year and then it's going up 5% and then it's going up 5% on top of that. So we're we end up paying someone 13% and, you know, the sky's the limit, I guess. So I'm wondering, I just, it just start, struck me as, okay, we agreed to their, the county's 12,000, which is steep, it's a 50% increase. And then they want to put 5% per year on top of that. Just was like adding insult to injury. So we're in a bad bargaining position on this, you know, otherwise we put the the police department out in the parking lot. But was there any discussion from the county when they sent us this?
There was an attempt at a good faith discussion before it was on their board agenda. And it was, uh, our representation was there and advocated for, I think, no change, but, um, these terms seem to have been what they were comfortable with at the outset. There was not a discussion, there was not a robust discussion of members of the board.
Yeah, and so my, my understanding when we walked out of that meeting was they were going to stick with the $12,000, but we didn't, they didn't mention the 5% increase per year. So I thought, well, if we have a three-year contract and it's at 12,000, that's, that's what we live with.
I think they alluded to it in one of the two meetings. There was a discussion about making sure we got closer, faster to the, whoever they were considering an equivalent.
Well, I thought the 12,000 was the equivalent.
I think it's worth looking into, correct, to make sure that I can look back at the negotiations and look at back at what was in that board resolution and verify that it's correct, but.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was massage because it left the boardroom and changed the door. It was that somebody massage it along. So, yeah, if you could just check on that. Then I'd be sad as well.
Thanks for that. Any other questions about that, Karen Silver? Okay, all right, then we have the donations.
So we're not approving it and we'll refer it another?
Well, I guess I implied, yeah. We want to know that before we agree to its terms.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, I can see why they want to know our 2023 lease number for their budget purposes, but this escalation is not the same.
I just, I, I wasn't aware that that was in there. I still had that fixed in my mouth and 12,000, 50% increase.
All right, we have, um, to the library, um, a donation of $100 from Marilyn Leck. Did that be missing or is it Leckard? I don't know. Leckler, Leckler, Marilyn Leckler. To the library, also $500 as an anonymous gift to the kids swim group program, a $9,000 gift from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation and a $4,000 gift from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I assume that's what that is, separate with an extra app. To the Wabashaw Fire Department, Baker's rubbish removal, uh, a dumpster and Hills Hardware charcoal and water and value of $1,000. So those very generous donations, do we have a motion to accept? and Hill's Hardware charcoal and water and valued a thousand dollars. Those very generous donations, do you have a motion to accept?
I move.
Give a second. Give a motion from Tim and a second from Brian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, I wonder how that announcement, um before we adjourn. Uh we have um financials, we emailed the council as usual and then on Saturday, October twenty-ninth at ten-thirty and again at twelve-thirty, there's a waste powder sewer plant tour. Um as I understand it, there's some high school kids doing a tour. Is it the same time or are they doing that?
Uh October twelfth, I think.
So there's a desire to get um students interested in waste powder treatment careers and give them some glimpse of the technology. And so they agreed to do that as a part of their curriculum, which is very cool. And then anyone else, members of the public can join on the twenty, ten-thirty and twelve-thirty.
You will learn a lot. I've gotten this tour. It's very interesting. And um free and open to the public, just kind of another way that we're trying to expand communication with the public, get you interacting with what we do behind the scenes, so. Hoping that it's a successful event.
Yeah, thanks to Pat and Lisa, whoever else was involved in signing that and the next nonsense. Uh we have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you, guys. It's not bad. We covered a lot of ground and we have more to cover. We'll